10, 2021, planning commission meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Can we get a roll call, please? Vice Chair Spencer Willard.
Present.
Chair Cameron Metzger. Ron Heberlin.
Here.
Jerry Greenfield. Olive Gallagher.
Hey, Olive, your ideas.
Chair Jerry. Jan Schinzke.
Here.
Aaron Lewis.
Here.
Thank you. So have you seen Chair Metzger is not here today, so I'm going to try to fill in for his very capable professional hands, so bear with me, everyone. Uh, maybe we should put stands for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recoupling building for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. Great. So this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding any items that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall, there in City Hall, or here via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to recorder using the Zoom chat function so we may hear from you now.
I would add, if anyone's watching on YouTube and wants to reach out to us, they can also call 503-579-1536. And I can give them in for input.
Okay, so call that phone number if you're watching on Zoom and you haven't said. Okay, you have not heard from anybody, correct?
No.
All right. Well, then let's move on to the consideration of minutes. So the, what is it, the February 10th, I believe, uh, meeting minutes are being considered. Um, were pre, they were previously distributed with our packets. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I looked over and I didn't have any. So then if I'm not hearing any corrections necessary, then the minutes are approved as distributed. All right, so. And then move on to my next agenda item. I think we are now ready to hear from staff on our first agenda item, which is the I-5 pedestrian bridge.
Yes, uh, thank you Vice Chair Willard, I'm Miranda Bates, I'm the planning director for the city and I'll go ahead and introduce, uh, staff on this item. Just as a brief reminder for you and those who might be listening, um, the I-5 pedestrian bridge is a project that has been, uh, by the city for a long time and sitting in our transition plan. Uh, it's a key project to increase connectivity throughout the city and in particular connect our transit center that is on the west side of I-5 to our town center and.
Employment areas and residential areas on the east side of I-5. So it's a critical project, uh, connecting the two sides of, um, the city, particularly from a multi-modal perspective. Um, and it's also an integral project into the overall kind of network and connectivity citywide. So, um, it's been a critical project for a long time. And then as you all will recall, during the town center, uh, concept planning project or master plan project, it was identified as a key framework project for really bringing the town center vision to life. Um, and as a part of that project, we, uh, the community also identified a desire for a plaza or, um, public open space, gathering space that would be at that eastern landing of the pedestrian bridge in town center. Um, so I'm really excited for the presentation tonight. Um, as you know, we've been in front of you for a few work sessions. Uh, we've gotten community input, we've gotten input from planning commission, city council. Um, the designs have moved along and I think you're going to be really excited to see, um, what the project team has to share with you this evening. Um, so with that, I'm just going to pass it over to the project manager, Zach Weigle, who's our capital projects engineering manager for the city. And he'll go ahead and introduce the team and talk a little bit more about what you're going to see tonight, um, and kind of where we're going from here.
Thank you, Miranda. Um, good evening, Vice Chair Willard and members of planning commission. Uh, as Miranda said, my name is Zach Weigle, I'm the capital projects engineering manager for the city and project manager for the I-5 pedestrian bridge project. Um, with me tonight is, um, the project lead of the design team, Bob Goodrich from Dow and Alex Doopy and Melissa with, um, Melissa Erickson with MIG. And, um, so yeah, uh, we were last before you in September, um, when we were looking at different bridge types and, uh, different plaza designs. And we got some feedback from you based on some feedback we received from the public during the summer. And, um, and then based on that, the city council, uh, gave the project team some direction in October. To go, they, they identified the tide, uh, tide arch bridge as the preferred bridge design. And then they agreed with, uh, combining the elements from the drops and ripples concept and the, um, the, uh, the, oh, help me out, Melissa, I totally blanked.
River Oxbow.
The what, what is it?
The River Oxbow.
River Oxbow, I totally blanked. Uh, elements from, uh, both those, uh, plaza designs into one design. And as, uh, as, uh, Miranda said, um, the staff are really excited, uh, to share with you what, uh, the design team has come up with and how they've incorporated all of the feedback that we've received to date. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, Melissa and Alex, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Zach, and thank you, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, very nice to see you again and we're excited to give you kind of an update of where we are. And we have a few specific questions we're going to pose, um, and I am going to request screen sharing, just to make sure that works, all right, can you all see this? Excellent, thank you. All right, so let's get this going. So we're going to break tonight into kind of three discrete pieces for conversation. We're going to focus on the bridge first and we're going to kind of walk you through some of the specific elements of that and then have a couple of questions we want to ask you. Then we're going to talk about the plaza and then Andrew is going to talk about general direction that we're looking for and using this as a setup. So, um, as Miranda and Zach both mentioned, obviously, we've had a lot of different, um, feedback, both from yourselves, from city council, from the public. And so what we're going to be representing tonight is kind of how that's been manifested in the 30% set that we submitted to the city, um, last month and are what we're working forward to. So without further ado, let's talk about the bridge a little bit. Um, the main question we're going to ask you at, at the end of this brief little image, uh, deluge that I'm going to send your way is basically trying to get some feedback from you all as far as which of these elements do you feel really kind of helps represent the themes that were identified, which had to do with Lemon River, looking at the flow, the themes, components. And so we're just wanting to make sure that we have a few options. And so trying to figure out where within those so that we can narrow the band of choices as we continue to refine the design. I am going to send, um, and be sharing my screen over with several kind of different images about different aspects of the bridge. That's kind of the intent, I'm going to go through them kind of quickly, but talk about some of the pros and cons. We can go back to them if we need to, but I wanted to kind of give you an overview so that you could be thinking about things in general context. So the current bridge, um, as Zach mentioned, the tide arch was the design choice that was moved forward as far as, um, going through with construction documents, working on this kind of doubled arch as the main kind of gesture as it crosses I-5, looking at a variety of different components, both as far as how that, um, kind of will gracefully connect the east and west side, but also be a visual impact along I-5 as you are traversing along the park freeway. Based on the community feedback, there were several different items that were prioritized for kind of doing a little deeper dive for kind of customization and paying a little bit more attention to kind of the look and feel that we're looking for in the bridge. Those included a lot of different aspects of lighting, including looking at lighting the actual bridge structure itself, looking at different components along the cables and or the handrails, looking at the colors of the bridge supports, looking at the, um, custom safety, um, fencing along the bridge itself, um, to address the barriers for pedestrians and bikes who are actually on the structure, looking at the shape of those actual supports. And then there's some additional pieces related to some of the retaining walls that are on either side of the ramp as it kind of works its way back down to grade, as well as some bike path lighting that we want to try and take a look at for, for you this evening. So, let's talk about lighting, because this is a kind of one of the big pieces. I think there's a lot of different ways in general this can go. And in some ways, it's kind of a question about whether you want the lighting to be subtle or whether you want to be a little bit more articulated and perhaps more of an emphasis. There's a range of different options and we'll kind of go through a series of different places of how that can, um, appear. So there's a variety of things, looking at the arches themselves and how that illumination can occur, trying to take a look at whether it's recessed within the structure itself, different components of how that might potentially look. So this gives you an idea of one existing bridge that has some lighting, um, type that may be something that we're kind of looking at or what it might look like within ours. There's also the option to take a look at actually lighting the arch itself. This is similar to the Minto Bridge in Salem, um, which you may have seen, um, in a variety of other components, this is when we look at it quite a bit, but that kind of simple delineation of the actual structure itself becomes a kind of a, uh, an elegant way to take a look at the overall lighting within that. There's also the option to take a look at a range of colors and or the, the ability to look at changing materials or colors at different points of time and working within that. Um, it still provides sufficient light for safety considerations, but it allows for a little bit more customization perhaps and or seasonal change or hourly change depending on how it is actually programmed. There's also the option to kind of look at the overall, um, spans themselves and how that is illuminated, trying to take a look at how, um, that can help accentuate the architectural gesture of the bridge itself, um, while also still providing light and for pedestrians and bikes on that structure. Within the bridge path itself, there are several different things that we can take a look at. We can look at the handrails, we can kind of look at the curb ground level and how that is lit up. We can take a look at whether it's continuous, whether it's moments, whether it's actually within the paving itself, um, or whether it's in the structures. There are. Oops, sorry, my, my cursor just stopped, well, let's go back, hold on. This is what happens when you do remote, pardon me. So there's also aspects along the cables itself. Within the tide arch, there are a variety of structures within the overall arch that also could be lit and trying to take a look at that would be cast light, it'd be projected. That's one opportunity for that to continue, that could also be addressed along that span pedestrians are actually using as well. Now, some of the lighting options depends on the actual color of the bridge. And this kind of gets to how the bridge looks during the day versus how it looks at night. I would say lighting is an evening, um, accentuation, but during the day, that's also a consideration. And so the bridge could be actually itself, uh, a color, um, that does impact how well it takes projected light or, um, other lighting. So that's a consideration to take a look at day versus evening. The pieces that we've looked at thus far is building off of Wilsonville's colors, so looking at both the green and the blue and what that might look like. Looking at white and off-white, which we didn't show, um, but you know, subtly different, and then gray. The white certainly allows the broadest range of lighting, um, opportunity because it reflects it the most. As we move into colors, it just maybe becomes a little less predominant and Bob can certainly address that if there are questions on that too as we advance. For the screening along the sides, there are a variety of different options that we can take a look at as far as customization. There's almost an endless variety that we can take a look at. And obviously, we're trying to make sure that the bridge ties into the plaza and so that those read as a continuous whole and have a holistic look. But there's a variety of different shapes, materials, um, and how that could be articulated. And so that's something that we would love to get a little bit of feedback as well. Some examples of what that looks like, um, have a variety of different pieces as far as whether there's, there's color, there's integral form, whether there's custom places applied to it to imply component, whether it's sections of fences. There's a pretty broad range within this and it also becomes an, a piece that also could be part of the artistic expression on the component. But there's a wide range of what we can try and take a look at, which again, all these pieces kind of relate together as far as the overall look and feel that we're looking for direction as far as the, the further kind of, um, delineation for the bridge. For the actual rail itself, there's obviously going to may need internally for protection fencing for folks that are actually walking along the structure. There's a range of those, um, opportunities, whether it's color, whether it's integral, how it's related to the protective fencing as far as components, how minimal of sort of structure it looks or how visually predominant it is, is certainly a consideration to try and take a look at. But these are some of the options to look at for that custom fencing and for the railing. There are two areas where we have retaining wall. Um, this is a rotated view of the west side, so I'm from the right distribution section. And as the path comes up off of the, um, street and builds grade, there is a retaining wall section that will start becoming, um, increasing in height as we gain height across the freeway. So that you can see that this kind of vertical face, this is a, a cut of that, you know, will be fairly visible, especially as we get closer to reaching the clearance for the freeway. So that's a consideration to take a look at. That can be articulated in a lot of different ways. We're predominantly looking at form liner examples. Here are some different kind of samples of what that imagery could be that is applied to it. A variety of different ranges as far as textures, components, um, a range of different kind of ways that that can be articulated that we can further explore as far as possibilities. Again, wanting to make sure that we're working together with the plaza and the direction that we received there. There are a variety of different pieces of how form liner is used, um, as well, that kind of builds into kind of more of a continuous, um, look versus kind of more of the, the tiered, almost like a brick applique that's applied, but looking into things that are maybe a little bit more kind of, um, broader impact for how that could potentially address, again, a range of different possibilities there. These are some with their locations and where they're located for some general reference. There is also retaining wall in the plaza, but we're going to talk about that one when we talk about the plaza. But there are two sections where that happens. So I did go through those really quickly because we really kind of want to focus on discussion, but we want to at least give you an overview of some of those components within the bridge that still have some flexibility. And so trying to get a feedback from, from you all based on the items that have been identified from the previous discussions about where, which one of these are more resonant and getting us closer to where we want to try and take a look at. And whether the desire is for something that is a little bit more subtle as far as the choices that we look at or whether we want to have some things that are maybe a little bit more, um, unique and or stand out a bit. Um, with that, I'm going to ask Alex to help me kind of, uh, moderate conversations, um, and see if we can kind of get some additional discussion. And what we'd like to do is maybe have about, you know, five, 10 minutes so that we can still have some time to go through the plaza and then revisit everything at the very end.
Certainly, and I think as we, as we step through these, um, as Mel said, we, we did step through these pretty quickly. We can go back and look at other slides if necessary, but I think the goal for tonight is, is just to help provide a little bit more guidance. We don't have to necessarily choose a specific option out of each one. Though like lighting, for example, is it, is it dramatic or understated? Is it, you know, does it, is it colored or is it white? You know, those are the types of things that we're, we're, you know, kind of looking for input and then we'll come back to you with, with more refined elements with that input. So, so with that, um, Chair Willard, should we, do you want to, are you going to step around or is it open to questions? How would you like to manage the, the discussion on the bridge?
Um, I think maybe if we had a bit of a discussion first and then we could, um, I'd just let people, uh, reply as they, as they see fit.
Great.
Uh, I'll go ahead and start since I'm unmuted.
Perfect.
One question I had is, in your, uh, research and in your outreach, did, did the idea of a dark sky and wanting to preserve the dark sky ever come up? Because we have the elements with nature, but then, uh, uh, overly illuminated bridge would compete with that, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pop in and Bob can correct me. Um, but yeah, we're certainly looking at dark sky, we're also limited by ODOT requirements. And so it's certainly coordinating with both of those pieces. Um, so it's a matter of balancing those along with the safety considerations to make sure that there's enough foot candles that people can actually make the, you know, the conveyance as they're on it. Bob, do you want to correct me on anything?
Nope, that's accurate.
I would just add that, you know, the, the city does have that, uh, dark sky policy when it comes to street lighting and, um, that is a consideration for the bridge. But you know, what we, one of the things we heard pretty strongly, and I think it was the number one thing we heard about the bridge elements was, um, you know, the lighting was important, so, um, so of course, take it into effect, you know, the impact to, uh, the sky, but also providing the lighting that, um, is needed to highlight the bridge, so.
Yeah. The second question I have before I open it up to the other commissioners is, um, I can't help but notice when I drive towards Portland, how much graffiti is present? And so how much do we need to take into consideration graffiti combating into our recommendations?
I'll say graffiti is always an issue, um. And I think something that we'll just have to keep in mind as we start looking at materials and how it can be treated, um, there are a variety of anti-graffiti, well, at least helping combat it. Um, I, I think anything is possible to be tagged if someone really wants to, but trying to keep that as a, as a lens. There are a variety of different coatings you can put on it, which makes it easier to power wash or address. So I think as we take a look at more specifics as far as materials, that was something we will keep in mind.
Okay, luckily, that's not a huge problem in Wilsonville.
You're fortunate.
Yeah, I would ju, I would just add that our, that the, uh, city's public works department has been, uh, involved in the reviewing of the design so far. And, um, that's something that they're paying attention to as well and, you know, have the, um, knowledge, um, of what works and what doesn't. So we'll be relying on them as well. And, uh, they had also mentioned, um, there's a number of products out there for anti-graffiti that, um, they're familiar with, so.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions before we start getting our direct feedback? Yes, Commissioner Heberline.
Yes, Zach, question for you. Um, so for the Wilsonville Road, uh, freeway, I'll say underpass, where there is the, uh, the art that the school kids did, what level of graffiti have we seen in that in the, shoot, probably five or six, maybe even longer now years that that has been, uh, been out there and completed?
You know, I, I am not aware of, of much, if at any, um, that's something I can follow up with our public works department on, um, uh, to see if there is, um, you know, the, the one image, uh, on the retaining wall is actually from the interchange with the kind of embossed, uh, three, uh, retaining wall. And I'm not aware of any graffiti on that wall either, so, um.
Yeah, I.
I can follow up, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the reason why I was asking is, you know, when I was, when I was thinking about the, the walls for the landings, you know, it is, is the fact that it was a, I'll say, community effort to make that art, one of the reasons why we haven't seen vandalism of that? And is that something that we can do as a way to both promote art in the community? I'll also give the, the kids an opportunity to be part of the design, uh, and, and be a way for, for it to be more of a, a whole city project. Um, I really like that art installation and the fact that the kids did that, that to me is very powerful. And so if there's other places that we can do things like that, I'm, I'm all for something, uh, along those lines if we can.
Right, and Commissioner Heberline, we'll be within the plaza, if there is, you know, there will be consideration for art, whether that's installation or other types of, of, of elements. So that's definitely something we can consider. But yeah, from a, I think the goal is to reduce the number of walls as much as possible to, you know, not have the, the palette or the, the canvas, i- i- if you will. But yeah, certainly considerations with public works and others to make sure that those exposed walls are, you know, able to be maintained, so.
I have a question, uh, earlier was mentioned that, uh, feedback was in the, uh, area of concerning the lighting. Can you, um, provide a little bit more, um, information on that?
Um, I, I can, and we, we also have, we, on the website, and we can provide that again, we do have a summary of all of the public input where lighting was, was a part of that. We did an external survey that, um, actually got a really strong, um, hit rate. And I think what people wanted to see with the lighting is that, you know, it is, um, it really showcases the bridge, you know, it really showcases the architecture, but also as a statement that, you know, this is, this is Wilsonville. And so, you know, like the example on the left side, which is, is Dallas, I believe, when that bridge is lit up at night, you know, it's, it's iconic. And, and I think from what we heard from input is that those were similar, um, types of comments that we heard as well for that lighting. And I think that's actually a question to this group, which would be, um, good to talk about at some point too, is the color of the bridge. As Mel mentioned, certainly does have an impact on that lighting palette. And so if we are focused on lighting, the coloring of that bridge will, will have an impact on that as well too. So whether it's white or gray or green or blue or whatever that is, um, I think that's a consideration for, you know, addressing that, that, uh, kind of public interest in having a, a well-lit bridge.
Yeah, since we've, um, settled on the tide arch, I do like the idea of the, I like the two colors that you showed, the blues and the greens, the cool pull and the colors of the, the Wilsonville logo. Um, I thought that looked, looked nice. Other bridges, I, I like the one in Woodburg, but it's a, it's a different bridge style and so they can get away with more elaborate colors and, and brighter colors than, than I think this bridge needs. Commissioner Schinzke, you were nodding your head, I don't know if you have any other questions or, or comments?
It's, it's not a question, it's more of a, a concern. Uh, the question of the bridge path lighting was brought up of it being either continuous or in moments. And purely for me, from a safety standpoint, I would much prefer it to be a continuous lighting. Just, you know, if I'm going to be walking across the bridge at night, I don't want any dark pockets where somebody could be hiding or, or, you know, you never know what's going to happen in, in the dark. So, uh, I, that would be my, my biggest concern, even more so than the standpoint of, of design is just having that kind of safety net of light going across at night.
Continuous, continuous lighting.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, to expand on the continuous piece, did you also mean on all the time versus on motion, motion detector, um, illuminated? When, when necessary, as far as the path goes?
I think that we've talked about motion detection, I think we've been assuming that at night it'd be constant or there'd be set hours. And I think that's something we'll have to discuss kind of big with the city and what both ODOT requires and kind of what city standard would be.
Um, you know, when thinking about the, the lighting, uh, for the pathway, um, if we looked at, and I'll say being a little creative here, uh, in the pathway lighting, maybe, um, I don't know, alternate colors or something uh, with the color palette we're using, as long as it's bright enough. And I don't know, you know, with the LED lighting, which is pretty bright, how that would fit. But, um, you know, going along with also with some of the feedback you've gotten, and I'm not sure how much they talked about the pathway lighting or not, but that might be a little bit of fun and creativity, um, with some, doing some different things with the LED lighting there.
And I, I think in my mind, Commissioner, was that, you know, the, the outside illuminated bridge, bridge structure is more for anybody that's passing underneath it or by it, not necessarily for the people that are using it. And you're saying, and I like that idea of, of having it also be fun for the people that are actively using the bridge, not just for the people that are driving underneath it.
Correct.
I like that, that feedback as well.
Yeah, I do too.
And I think that's, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, like the Tilicon Bridge, for example, which is, it's a white bridge, you know, definitely strong structural elements, but you know, they use different colors of LED to signify different things, whether it's water level or temperature. You know, that's, that's something with LED, it's very flexible in terms of the, the quality of the light. And so if that's, if that's of interest, that, you know, that, that can certainly be something to play into our, our lighting palette.
So would, would that allow us to, um, vary the colors?
It would, and Bob, you, you would know more on the lighting elements, but yes, like for the Tilicon Bridge, they have, yeah, there, there's different colors throughout that, you know, depending on where they're.
No, what I, what I mean, if let's say we wanted to change the color, I don't know, for a holiday or something, along that, would that allow that?
There, I'll jump in here, there, there are LED options that give that flexibility, yes.
Okay.
That would be nice.
That would be.
I agree.
Yeah, personally, I like the idea of a white bridge because it gives you that flexibility for color. Um, you know, the one. You know, the one thing as, as we were sliding through those pictures, one of the first ones was, you know, it appeared to be a very bright white. And while it is visually interesting, my concern is for the people who might be driving underneath it, that it is more than, more than what we'd want. Yeah. So if I were to look at that and I was driving underneath it, I want to make sure it's not something that would be distracting for the drivers, but a, you know, something that they can continue to drive underneath and not focus their attention on. So that's, that's my thought is I think, I like the idea of subtle. I like a white bridge that gives us the flexibility for color.
And I like this bridge.
It's a great bridge.
It is a great bridge.
You know, my feeling is if we're going to do a bridge, we should just do a beauty. I mean, if, if we're going to go to the trouble to do a bridge, do something that really is, you know, something that people love to see, not just another bridge that's forgettable. Like the one in Boston, for instance, the arch bridge there. Everybody knows that it's very iconic. So I also agree that a white bridge makes sense. And if you can change the LED colors elsewhere for holidays or whatever, then you get the best of both worlds. But I like this one.
So does, do any of the commissioners have feedback on screening?
Simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not a fan of number two, just because I kind of think it looks a little disjointed for the vibe we're going for, which to me is more of a natural flowing look.
Yeah.
So number two to me looks like it wouldn't necessarily fit. I like number one or three.
Yeah, I, I'm leaning towards one and three as well. Two and four both seem, it just, it doesn't seem to flow with the rest of the bridge.
Yeah. And we remember we have drops and ripples and river oxbow that we're going to hear. So that, those one and three fit with that as well.
Yeah, I agree.
If you go to the.
I like, I like three more so than one, but I could, I could live with one, but I, I really liked three.
I agree.
Photo that you had of the, the fish that, the number four there. I did, that, that one did, I liked that one. I don't know the other commissioners.
I, I like that. My only concern is obstruction. I mean, I, I, it's, it's beautiful because I love the fish, but I'm just wondering how much of an obstruction that would be, may not be much at all. So example four may be good. I like it too. My only concern, like I said, is, is it too, too obstructive in its design?
I think, I think one of the considerations to to think about is, you know, is it the, the bridge structure itself, itself that you want it to be at the forefront? And really the safety fencing is kind of fades into the background or is more supportive of that design element? Or do, or do you want the, the screening to be ornamental and really stand out and maybe detract a little from the, the, you know, the, the structure of the bridge or the form of the bridge itself. So.
I choose option number one.
So keep the, keep the screening minimal and focus on the bridge elements.
Either the bridge itself is, is a thing that is, you know, something you really are taken with, or you're distracted by a lot of other stuff. And I love number four, but I don't know. I don't see it with the kind of bridge you're trying to go for.
I think maybe we could, with number four, we could kind of, I like number one with having the bridge be the focus. And maybe we could have some more of those kind of fish design elements be in the walls leading up to it or something like that.
Or on the walkway?
Yeah.
On the walkways, that would be.
That'd be cool.
But I, I think, you know, again, less is more.
I guess my question, my question would be around who is, for example, for who is it benefiting? So I can see, you know, those types of things being more of a benefit for the people that are on the bridge where the perspective doesn't allow you really to see the bridge in its entirety. So you don't necessarily see all of the form of it. So you're seeing more of the installations that are on the bridge and not the entirety of it, where the people that are at a distance, you're seeing the entirety of the bridge and seeing it in a completely different perspective. So is there a way to, to provide that? That view for the people on the bridge in comparison to the ones that are, are not on it?
And I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing from the group is about, you know, a balance between, you know, kind of bridge design and, you know, some of the amenities, like whether it's the, the screening. So one shouldn't detract from the other, but also, you know, are there different moments? Commissioner Heberline, as you were saying, like auto versus bike or ped, there may be some different pieces that a person experiences depending on the mode that they're traveling, but that they need to be, they need to be complimentary of one another. So we, I, I do, I do know you have other agenda items after us. So I want to make sure we have time for the plaza. Are there other questions, comments? You know, we can speak to any of these. I think we did a great, we got a good input on, on the bridge structure and color. Safety fencing. Are there other elements here that we should, we should speak to briefly before we move into the plaza?
I just want to make a comment about the lighting because I know, being on the enhancement committee, I know that the, the underpass bridge has been struggling with a lighting issue. So I just wanted to mention that whatever lighting elements we choose, that we make them, we have ones that are easily replaced, easily enhanced, and don't become a financial issue down the road. You know, you can sometimes back yourself into a corner with design. So just a concern.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Now, should we move into the plaza?
Yes. And we'll come back.
Yes.
We want to talk about everything together, but let, let's, let's talk a little bit about the plaza because this has changed a bit, which, which you'll see. So the two pieces on the plaza that we want to basically kind of have is similar. So is how this is developing, reflecting, you know, the different comments that, that have been provided thus far. And then what needs maybe further consideration? Um, this is the piece that's probably the the newest, just because you hadn't seen kind of the base pieces, you knew the two options that we were looking at. So as a reminder, there were two different options, which Zach mentioned. So we had the drops and ripples and the river oxbow. And the, the direction was to basically kind of morph those together and come up with a singular component. So the drops and ripples had a variety of smaller spaces, kind of all working within the, the general kind of the swoop of the ramp as it comes down. Looking at a variety of kind of definitely in both cases, focusing a little bit more on a passive use with more smaller, or let me try that again, with several smaller places for people to gather and not having a focus on larger gathering places. And having this be more of a contemplative place where different people could be in different locations. And so that was the main direction. The river oxbow had kind of these series of undulating paths, really kind of focusing more on kind of a stroll through a pretty heavily planted area. And so the desire was to meld those together. So we did. So what, what I'm kind of sharing, I'm going to show you two different versions because it's complex, but hopefully we can kind of work through. So the overall bridge ramp kind of comes down. This is a primary path that continues on to, to the Emerald chain for the, the bike connection. There's a gateway plaza. The gray areas are specialty paving. So there's specialty paving as you kind of have this pause to realize you're entering as you're heading westbound onto the plaza and the ramp structure. There's also a singular, you know, smaller sized plaza that is kind of more of a central gathering area. There's a smaller, so you know, specialty paving. And then on the north side of the ramp, there's a little bit of articulation kind of along, along the edge to address part of that component. As you enter the green areas are, we obviously took you seriously at the ripples. So there's a lot of circles that is really intended. But there are a series of lawns. They're generally flushed, but they have flush concrete bands. So you can mow right over them, but to using that to kind of help accentuate the pattern, also making those spaces possible for people who want to just gather in different components. Those occur in some cases, there's some slight elevation change. So they're slightly mounted. We have some photos to show you what those might look like. And then there's a secondary path that takes the kind of the river oxbow piece that kind of undulates through. There's a variety of seating opportunities, some changes in elevations, very subtle as far as components. An undulating path that connects what we're calling the cascade plaza. Again, I'll show you some photos. The paths that go through the green are generally planting areas as are the orange and yellow underneath. But we're trying to just kind of differentiate them. So you can see that there's kind of bands of planting to kind of help accentuate that pattern. As you go underneath the overhead structure, there's again, another larger component of a pathway, allowing some seating along the side, more of a central gatherize noting node here. And then along the actual structure where it gets a little bit tight as the ramp makes its dungeon, there's a green planted wall that is along the north edge. And on the underneath section, and then we'll go through and kind of show you a variety of different images of what those pieces look like. The next image I'm not going to stay on very long because it's very complicated, but it's the one that shows at least some of the trees because the other one is more of a gesture. And that was a very important piece of what people identified as far as shape, having kind of a sense of LA, making sure those considered. So the circles helps you at least identify that, yes, there are trees. We're definitely putting quite a few. But I want you at least to be able to kind of see how some of that sets up kind of like that banding, that sense of procession, allowing kind of a sense of kind of owning these different, different corners and setting that up. It also gives you some clarification of the intensity of the planting, which is meant to be a low, low maintenance because there's not mowing and there's not hedging. So we're working with city staff to kind of address those specifics, but it gives you at least a general idea of the look. It's a very complicated passive plaza, but it's going to be visually stunning. That's our goal. That said, to help you kind of identify what those different components are, there were really kind of, you know, five key things that came out of the public comment that people really wanted to make sure were included. Was looking at art, having it be functional, having multiple pieces, having him be smaller. So trying to take a look at how that might be actually manifested. Really kind of a focus on sustainable features. So looking at planting for biodiversity and looking at climate adaptive, looking at things that'll help address stormwater. All those things are included. The trees and the plantings, you know, so some kind of combination between some formal alleys, some green walls and really kind of taking a looking at having a diversity so that there is seasonal variation as well as visual, textural and color changes. Shade and range shelter. This is the piece that you will not see in the plan yet. It is coming, but we kind of wanted to get driven directions so we can kind of work on how that's going to get manifested because we know that's critical because it'll take time for the trees to actually be able to provide that. And that's one of the key things that was identified. And again, on the gathering spaces, having a variety of places where people can gather in smaller groups with a variety of, of seating opportunities, but also a variety for strolling and rolling through the space. Those are kind of the main drivers. So with that, I'm going to walk through some of the specifics. And in most of these cases, I've got a, a very tiny little key map and this hot pink mark somewhere. So you kind of know roughly where it is just to help. So within the cascade plaza, which is the largest, but not a large gathering space. The thought is this is a, a very flexible space for people to kind of sit. The thought is as that retaining wall and the ramp comes down at that back face is basically fronted with the salt columns reminiscent of the narrows along the Willamette River, providing some nice texture and components. Within the plaza itself, there'll be a variety of different seating and a larger and or several larger stones to kind of be the stone that created the tiered arch bridge. It's the skipped stone and where it lands that sets up the ripple pattern. But looking at a variety of textures there. So it also relates to some of Ross's work and Memorial Park and along the river. So that kind of links with the additional plazas that the city has within its repertoire. The specialty plating, which is hot pink in these spaces where we're looking at changing from kind of a, creating a little bit more emphasis to kind of help address the, the ripple pattern. The thought is it would look maybe something like some of these components, just so that there's some articulation on the ground plane, a variety of different components. But the idea of really kind of having the ripple pattern kind of show up. We're looking at having some hexagonal shaped pavers. They would alternate in color. So you get some kind of pixelation take. We know that there's some hesitancy on that from maintenance. And so we're working with them to see whether that, you know, whether that will work or not, but something that we're considering. But it'll certainly allows that kind of ripple component to continue to work its way through. Or some other treatment. The fern or green wall is on the north side of, of the ramp as it comes down so that there's something along that north side to make it interesting because it's also a very narrow section. So that there's a reason to be there and have that be kind of articulated. And wrapping it around so that as you cut underneath the structure itself, it's also there. But providing again, a nice, really kind of opportunity to kind of bring in the stormwater component, a rich green piece and something that you don't see every day that helps kind of articulate that edge. Also harder to graffiti plants, which is cool. Some of positions. There are a variety, all the little pink spots are different places we're looking at seating and there's a range of components. Most of these will probably be custom. May not, but we're looking at trying to play off these ripples with some literally kind of carving into some of these little mini mounds with some seating, making sure that we have a range of accessible components by allowing some, some nooks for people to kind of gather. These mirror well might end up having kind of more of an overhead component as part of them. So that we can kind of create something that helps address some of the sun shade components within that. But then looking at things that are a little bit, maybe more on the fun side and informal that is not really played, that could be played, could be seating, could be kind of lounging, but kind of trying to take a look at a variety of things that kind of pulls up that the skipped rock discussion that kind of sets up some of the components.
I love those. Those are great.
The mounds, um, the mounds are again, all the hot pink. Some of them will be lawn. The lawn will be such that they can be mowed. Some of them will be planted, but we do want to have a range because the site is essentially flat. We want to have some, some variation in the vertical nature so that there is a little bit more articulation, more interest. And so that you have some surprises. So there's at least subtle corners, not high enough that there's like issues, but enough that there's at least some visual interest. And who knows, maybe a little bit of informal play in, in the process. There are opportunities where we've laid out again, emphasizing the ripple component, looking at having in some cases flushed, in some cases they're risers to address some of the grade change, but just building these into the process to kind of continue again, you know, driving that theme home to make sure that those components read within the process and trying to take a look at whether it's in paving, planting, a variety of different materials. The rain garden is a section specifically in this, this section of the component, the path as it crosses here is actually going to be a boardwalk. We're anticipating something like this. So this stormwater garden will actually be underneath, but that becomes another moment. We had to change that a little bit, just given some of the infrastructure considerations and some of the grading. So this is the space that really works for it. But working into that component, so that there's still that opportunity to provide that sense of kind of a connection with where the water is going while addressing storm events on site. So again, kind of the crass course of, you know, going through a variety of images. A lot of things that still kind of be worked out and refined, but what we're kind of hoping to do is one, how close do we get? You know, what are the pieces that kind of resonate? And then where are some things that we need to take a look as far as further consideration as we continue to advance the process and the design?
And I think adding on that as, as well now from elements that need further consideration, you know, we were refining the design, but are there specific questions that, you know, we could do a quick poll through, you know, bang the table or let's talk Wilsonville, something like that. So if there, if there are things you're just not sure about, that's okay. And so that's, that's what we were also looking for input as well too. So Chair, Chair Willard, we're ready.
All right. So in the interest of time, because we do have two other topics, you know, we'll try to get through this as efficiently as we can. So why don't we do a round table and see how that goes? Commissioner Woods, I'm going to nominate you because you're not muted.
No problem. Hey, look, can you go back to that, that terrace? I have a question on the functionality of that. What's, I mean, I understand the ideal, but how functional is that?
Oh, in most cases where we're proposing it, I could just couldn't find a good precedent image. It'd actually be probably planted as opposed to with lawn. The section that we have that's on the east side, it's a flush mow band. So basically it's just like a continuous surface. It's more did delineation. It becomes the, you know, in some ways the meditation path that, you know, kids use or people walk. But in the other cases where we have slight elevation change, it would not be lawn. That's not mowable. It'd be planted.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. You know, I'd like to see, just a general comment, as much, as, as much functionality in these areas as, as possible. I believe it was Commissioner Gallagher that said earlier about the little black rocks. I call them, they look like big black rocks to me. I love those. I think that will encourage individuals when they lay or whatever. But I think you, we, if we. But I think you, if we incorporate those, I think there'll be a lot of, of use of that. Overall, the, the designs that I've seen, they, they look good. There's a lot here. It really is. And one of the requests I'm going to make the next time you present to us is if you would provide this to us ahead of time and that allow us to really get into it and provide some really good concrete feedback.
Right. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Tsitsinski, you followed my no mute lead.
Yeah, I, I think those, most of the things we've been presented with are absolutely beautiful. I do like that there's a lot going on. I, it could be busy, but it doesn't seem that way to me. It seems like every time you go to this area, there will be something new to discover and enjoy. I love that green wall design that we were presented with. Maybe this is the millennial in me, but it's very Instagrammable. It'll bring a lot of young people probably just for that reason, but it's, it's stunning and I really like it a lot.
I'd like to see Instagrammable in the meeting minutes, please.
Maybe it'll become the word of the year.
I love it. Anything else, Commissioner Tsitsinski?
I, I don't think so. I think I would, just to kind of echo what Commissioner Wood said, just to be presented with this a little bit earlier so we can kind of review it in depth more on our own time would be a little bit helpful.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Well, this is the very first time I've had to see any of this since I'm relatively, well, I'm very. And I'm, I'm, I'm not readily impressed with things, design things, but I have to, I have to compliment you. I think this is sensational. So thank you for your work. There are just so many elements here that I think are just going to be inviting and comforting. I think it's what this town, I think it's what everyone needs. So right now I'm, I'm, I'm feeling awfully good about it and I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Great. Great feedback. Commissioner Haverly.
Yeah. So I was, I was initially overwhelmed, especially with that first picture of all of the stuff that is, that is in here. You know, seeing the pictures has helped a lot in terms of the specific areas and what it could be. So that really helped me a lot with, with the potential of the area. You know, the one thing that I still struggle with, with this area overall is its proximity to I-5. And I haven't seen anything here that would show me that, that there's going to be enough sound deadening and dampening to be a place where I could lay on one of those smooth rocks, which I love as well, and really be able to be in a peaceful area just because of, of the proximity and the noise that you have going that close to I-5. That's my one concern with this space is how do we, how do we make it functional and fun? While also acknowledging that I'm, or I'm concerned with how much use it will get given that noise.
Excellent point. We're planning on having at least probably the cluster of rocks or whatever. They end up becoming kind of in the Cascade Plaza so that it gets the buffering of kind of that solid back to at least help cut. Now granted, I five is running the whole way, so it still has some opportunities to cut through. But we are trying to bring in some of the topography that we're bringing and it's hoping to at least kind of help provide some additional. But it is something we are concerned with as well, which is why most of the seating is kind of on the eastern half and less on the western, but.
Okay.
Can I, can I enter something here since I live so close to I-5? I'm just wondering, did I see a water feature?
No.
I thought one of the pictures had a waterfall.
Oh, there was one with the ripple pattern, but it was more about the paving. We are not planning on having a water feature.
The reason I, the reason I bring it up is living so close to I-5, what happens is after a while, and, and we all have this trick for those of us that live in this area, is it sounds like a, it's, I always pretend I'm living near Niagara Falls. I'm living near a very loud waterfall. And after a while you really don't hear it. And I was just wondering if there was a water feature. It was on the west side that might help buffer the sound.
Well, I will say we're toeing with an idea and I'm going to make Bob have, have a headache. But we're playing the drainage as it comes off the bridge. And whether we could look at having some type of a slot drain that would actually then go onto the, to the fern wall and/or it has a drop so that there could be a moment where there's cascading when there is a rain event. We want this to place, this be a place where people come when it does rain because some, there's something different when it rains and, but it's lovely all the time. But no like splash pad, no set fountain, but we're still playing with some ideas.
Okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to suggest it.
All right. So my feedback was simply around the, I, I really like those stones. I saw many of the commissioners heads nodding on that one. And, and it did seem like a lot around the low mound area where you've got the undulating paths. That does not seem bikeable at all. And maybe that's the intent that we don't want people biking on it. We want to force them to get off and have to walk their bikes on these paths. Because that seemed like a really tight curve.
Yeah, the paths are really more intended for pedestrians strolling. I mean, there'll be people who will bike on them. The paths are all level. The thought is that they don't necessarily go onto the planted areas and in most cases they will be planted versus lawn. So they won't be readily able to, but we're still massaging.
Okay. No, I thought you guys did a great job. I think I would be proud of this plaza. So good job.
I have a question. Could you go back to that slide that showed the, the, I believe it was trees near I-5? Yeah, this one here. So these trees that are here, how much of a buffer is that with I-5? Do you anticipate?
Well, there's the right of way that exists that doesn't have much occurring on it that's off to the side. Then we've got the full road cross section and then we have this. So, but it's all pretty flat and level. So there's not a whole lot stopping the sound. That's why we try to at least kind of to the certain set, kind of burn up this edge and, and try and plant it and trying to maybe a little bit more screening, but we're also worried about having too much screening because then that becomes a safety issue. So we're still kind of refining to try and take a look at that.
It's going great. Thank you.
Is, is there a possibility for a sound wall? A barrier in between I-5 and this to help with some of that, a more physical prevention of the sound?
Probably if someone has bigger budget.
And that would be a, Commissioner Haverline, I think that'd be a broader question with, you know, a town center plan. Because there's, there's this piece, which is, you know, kind of that small slitter. But then from a future redevelopment standpoint, you know, you know, areas adjacent, like how those develop over time, visibility for those sites, you know, might be something to consider as well. But yeah, I know like north of this area, you do have sound walls near, near those residential areas.
Yeah.
And they don't do that much.
Good feedback. All right. Are we finished giving them the feedback on 30% design?
I have one more thing to add, just because somebody mentioned that they want people to come when it's raining. And I agree because it looks beautiful. Just some of the benches that we were shown, specifically the one that's next to the pretty flat rocks. Maybe just having some covers over those so people could stop and take it in and, and sit in the rain.
Noted. Melissa's got her thing figures up. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. It's exciting. Now we can move on to the next agenda item, which I believe is on the streetscape for town center.
Right. Thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Thank you, team. Appreciate it. And thank you, Vice Chair Willard. The next item I'm also excited to introduce this evening. This is the fun part of the projects where it's, you're kind of moved from the beginning and the initial kind of thoughts. And, and we're kind of in the meat of it. We're in the interesting part where we get to see a lot of good work being done, integrating community input and then bringing that back to you for further refinement. So I don't want to steal much of Mr. Bradford's thunder, but I just want to briefly mention that the last time we spoke to you, we had, I think, three design concepts for the streetscape. We got some initial feedback from you. That's now gone to city council and back out to the community. So the team this evening is going to unveil something new for you to consider this evening. A hybrid kind of approach, a refined or preferred concept that we'd like your feedback on to, to move forward to council and then hopefully move into what will serve as the foundation for the streetscape plan and town center. As you'll recall, the town center plan really has a mix of uses. It has different areas where there might be different types of uses. There's the main street. There's the higher density by I-5 and, and then it kind of gets to shorter buildings, two or three stories on the east side of the planning area. And we might see a lot of different uses from residential and office and commercial and retail. And we have a lot of open spaces in the town center. And one of the key goals of that project was harmonious design. And that really to a large degree was found, the foundation of that is within the public realm, which is within the streetscape. So this streetscape plan is really important in the sense that it sets that foundation, that theme that really creates a harmonious design throughout and within town center. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Bradford and he will introduce, he's associate planner at the city. He will introduce the rest of the team that's with him tonight.
Good evening, Vice Chair Willard, planning commissioners. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. Here with me and I'm project managing the streetscape plan. Here with me tonight is Senior Planner Kim Rivald, who's advising me on the project. And also we have Ben Weber from Sarah Design, who is the project manager on the consultant side. So the last time this project was before the planning commission, that was in November. And around that time we had the first public forum. And just to quickly summarize where we've been since then, we've introduced the project to city council in February. We've conducted stakeholder interviews. We've refined the concepts based on the feedback we've received. And the streetscape plans have had one technical advisory committee review. And we also recently wrapped up another public forum, which was on February 9th, 2021. And we posted similar outreach questions that we asked in the form on Let's Talk Wilsonville. That was open from February 11th to the 26th. Thank you to all who participated in the forum and the outreach. And with that, I will turn things over to Ben Weber with Sarah Design for the rest of the presentation and the draft recommended next step for the streetscape plan.
Can everyone hear me?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Philip. And thank you, Vice Chair and members of the Planning Commission for your attention and contributions tonight. Again, my name is Ben Weber with Sarah Architects and it's good to see you again for the streetscape project. I know we also occasionally visit for the middle housing project as well. But streetscape only for me tonight. So as Miranda and Philip said, we'll spend a bit of time, only a small fraction of time sort of reviewing the process, project process to date and some of the findings of the most recent public outreach. And then we'll try to spend the majority of our time on this draft recommended concept, which will be brand new content to you. And a few pointed questions that we're hoping to get your feedback on. I think it's quite serendipitous to have this following that really inspiring conversation about the bridge for the last hour. Because you're going to see a lot of, I think, hopefully relationships between the bridge project and the streetscape. A lot of design theme similarities. And I think it's marching orders to my team and that team to do a little bit more coordination check as we're getting into some of the details. So I was furiously scribbling notes based on your input on the bridge. And we'll be sort of contemplating how to think about that for the streetscape project as well. So let me get screen share going here. All right. Let this load up. Okay. So agenda for the next 50 minutes or so. Again, that process and a quick review of the planning commission's role throughout the entire project and specifically tonight. A quick look back at those preliminary design concepts, the three that Miranda mentioned from your November review meeting, that community engagement overview. And then most of our time in the recommended concept, number four and number five questions. That should be questions and next steps. So we are right in the heart of this, looking at the draft preferred concept and the planning commission review tonight. We'll have a similar conversation with city council in early April. As Philip mentioned, he gave a briefing to council in their first February meeting, if I remember correctly. And we'll come back in April with more depth there as well. Proceeding this has been those preliminary concepts and forum one that informed that as well as November planning commission. And then forum number two and the Let's Talk Online Engagement Platform that was running, you know, throughout the month of February. And then getting into spring, we'll start preparing the draft plan, which is almost literally where the rubber meets the road on street design. And we'll be looking at specific locations throughout the town center where this concept, which is in a generic, somewhat location agnostic form right now. But over the next couple of months, we'll be actually applying that to a number of specific locations throughout town center. And that's one of the things I'll be asking your input on. Additional planning commission review at that point. And then the final plan and adoption, during which planning commission and city council will have a critical role, of course. So a quick reminder of those preliminary concepts. You haven't seen this material, at least officially in planning commission, though I know a lot of you have come to the various forums and seen some of this online. So we had concept one, the agricultural legacy. Deriving off of, of course, the agricultural heritage of the region and drawing inspiration from, you know, wood, natural and somewhat geometric forms to the streetscape here. Technological innovation, of course, hearkening to that, the importance of that in Wilsonville's economic history and the foundation of the city. What you're seeing here is a greater emphasis on modularity, simplicity, contrast. All as ways of creating variety in the streetscape and looking for that adaptability that as we're designing right now, we're trying to anticipate the wide range of different street types, you know, that you all established several years ago in the town center plan. Really trying to anticipate all the different deployments for these materials and road configurations. And then the river environment, trying to take on more sinuous and fluid forms. The use of organic shapes and materials and really soft edges that kind of define the way you would move both along a sidewalk and across a street or from a parking space on the street into a business or a storefront entrance. This will look a little bit more familiar to you, back from the November meeting and these colorful diagrams in particular. That was the stage we were at in November and got all of your feedback on. Where you had, you know, words of encouragement about all of these in some regard, but a lot of favorability towards the river concept at that point. In addition to, you know, promising things you'd said about agriculture and technology, sort of accent pieces of that. So we certainly took your feedback from November to heart and that helped inform the way that we have adapted these of the last few months. So we took that material as well as a lot more detail, just a little bit of which I previewed on those slides for the three concepts. To the community engagement that we've been going through in January and February. This includes a couple stakeholder interviews, such as coordination with the consultants who are running your urban forestry. This includes a couple stakeholder interviews such as coordination with the consultants who are running your urban forestry management plan. The aforementioned technical review meeting that Philip mentioned with Public Works Engineering and Smart. A recent conversation with a representative from Capital Realty Group, who's certainly a property owner who knows the region well. And then one more to be determined here. And a quick look at just those forums, as we mentioned, one of those was in November, one was February ninth. And then we supplemented both of those with mini surveys on Let's Talk. So the most recent feedback from Let's Talk, which ended just about a week and a half ago. Pardon me, this is the forum. So these are the live conversations. We'll get to the Let's Talk here shortly. We put a couple of questions to people across these two different events. You can see the favorability of river and then also strong support for technology on this question of which concept best reflects the goals of the town center for design ecology, safety and comfort, versatility, sociability, vibrant and active. And then a somewhat similar distribution, you know, river coming out ahead, technology and agriculture. You know, coming in rounding out the voting here as we asked people to just simply please rank the concepts in order of favorite to least favorite. And this is some ranked choice voting here where we accentuated those first place goals with three points. A couple of those themes, a lot of support for the curvilinear elements of the river concept. But also some feedback that maybe it was overdone. And that those curvilinear elements should seek to be an accent piece, but maybe to not define the motive space or the ways that you traverse the sidewalk quite as much. A lot of very important questions about how to prioritize investment and design priority. Knowing that there are a wide variety of streets in the town center that we're going to be dealing with. And as Miranda mentioned, those will be serving different main street environments, residential mixed use and commercial spaces. And so some of those may be a higher priority. I know in the town center plan, certain streets are also identified as framework projects, much as the I five bridges. And so that emphasizes that those are sort of deserving of that additional look for prioritization and perhaps deeper investment. A lot of support for public art and student art from both the Technical Advisory Committee and members of the public, you know, questions about construction and maintenance costs. And certainly business owners are vested stakeholders in that conversation. A lot of support for traffic calming and then a lot of support to ensure business and storefront visibility and access. Once we got into the Let's Talk, we put a few other variations of those questions to folks. One of which was, you know, which streetscape concept contains the materials you would most like to see in the future town center streetscape? And you'll see examples of those materials here shortly. Again, river coming out, you know, pretty significantly ahead in this voting. Which elements, gathering spaces, movement areas, landscaper plazas of the streetscape are most important to your enjoyment? Landscape areas coming out ahead there, then gathering spaces in second, this is the whole panel on the left side. And so we asked this, you know, really just to get a sense of what people valued in a street design environment and what elements they thought were most impactful to making it an attractive and welcoming place. We also put the same question to folks to provide ranking for their, of those three concepts. And you can see river environment came out pretty significantly ahead with technological and agricultural. You know, fairly closely aligned there in second and third place. Other feedback we heard in those open ended comments about making the movement spaces easier to navigate. So I think that that's a corollary. I have some concern that the river elements were very appealing, but maybe a little overly complex for moving through spaces. Really emphasizing landscape and greenery. Looking at outdoor gathering areas that aren't just parks, but can also be used for business uses. Emphasis on walking and biking. We're always hearing feedback from people seeking, you know, shelter from the rain in the winter, shelter from the sun in the summer, as well as a fair amount of support for more water features throughout the town center. We know you have those in some of the parks in and near the town center. But maybe is there consideration for that in stormwater or other street design elements? Okay, so we sort of digested all that input. And over the last week or so, came out to this conclusion or the state of the recommendation right now. That is a blend of elements of the river environment theme with a lot of accents from the technological innovation theme. And as we sort of contemplate this, it may only be coincidence, but I think this tells sort of an interesting story about the way that the town center is a bit of a crossroads within Wilsonville. Drawing on elements of, of course, the Willamette River where Wilsonville was sort of first established in the 19th century along the riverbanks and the ferry crossing there. But then also acknowledging its 20th century sort of economic dynamism driven by technological innovation. And a lot of those major computer-based and industry-based employers that you have there. I do want to, you know, just emphasize that this is an implementation plan or an implementation component of the town center work from a couple of years ago. And so we are striving to create street design guidelines that are implementable in a clear and obvious way by a number of different parties. The city will have a role in this, you know, private property owners will have a role in this. There's a lot of different ways in which these streets will be built as private development and the street grid throughout the town center evolves and emerges. So that lens of sort of certainty, but flexibility to make a streetscape work for the particular type of of development or use that it might be next to is really central to this. That's why we're getting to this point over the next couple of months where we're taking what is still that location agnostic design concept right now. And we're going to be thinking about, you know, up to eight different street locations and up to three sort of unique bespoke locations in the town center to be test fitting this concept and actually applying it to sort of the dimensions and the conditions, either retrofitting the existing street or in many instances, bringing in completely new streets to your grid. So you'll see some of these locations like Park Place, right next to the Town Center Park, which is one of those framework, high priority locations. You'll see the promenade, which is a zero car street location. So how can we take this concept and apply it to a place where vehicle traffic, you know, isn't a consideration? But you know, moving on on foot and on bicycle certainly is. And then a couple of these unique design locations, those are potentially really central intersections, like at Park Place and Court Side. Or down at Wilsonville Road. Or of course, you see the one up in the top left corner where we want to be really thinking about how does the street grid and street design tie in to the plaza that is the east side landing of the I five bridge? So again, that's where, you know, the previous project discussion and this one, you know, very literally tied together. But I think we're, of course, striving for sort of consistency and uniformity across all of those and throughout the entire town center. So I'll be continuing to work with Philip and other city staff to kind of refine what these locations are and pick which ones are going to be most meaningful for doing this design guideline work. But I will have a question for you later on about what street typologies and what specific street locations you think are sort of the highest priority to put design attention to and potential investment to. So to finally get to the draft recommended concept, which is rather uncreatively named, just river plus technological right now. Definitely welcome your, your thoughts on new names for this as we move forward. What we, we hope to represent in this diagram is kind of that blend of orderliness to the motive space you see there in blue. Purple gathering spaces. Yellow areas for landmarks or transit stops or public art locations. And then using these green areas, which could be landscape seating benches, stormwater facilities, some of those other accent pieces to bring in that curvilinear shape and that's sort of fluid shape. That's a nice contrast to the linear nature of a lot, a lot of what else is going on in the street design. So moving through this, we've been designing at a sort of generic location, as I keep saying. So anticipating all the things that would potentially need to happen on different Wilsonville town center streets. Vehicle spaces, sidewalks, curb extensions, transit stops, so on and so forth. And you can see how that plays out in this plan view. Where some of those curved edge planter areas and seating areas are laid over top of the more geometric arrangement of the concrete or other material sidewalk pattern. Or some of the other orderly features that you're seeing here. Let me pull up a pointer here. You know, we're of course dealing with the official street right of way in the sidewalk zone and the street itself. But also trying to think about how does the street interact with, you know, what might be a private plaza or a courtyard that's part of a private property. But we want to bring a lot of design sort of consistency, you know, across both of those spaces. So we cut this section through here to show, you know, an example of how that could work with street trees and landscaping and of course the sidewalk zone. But then over here on the right side, one of those covered shelter awnings and a seating space. Over here in the section on the motive space, you know, doing something similar. So you'll see consistency with the trees and landscaping, but that's going right up against a building front with an awning and you know, sort of that zero setback area. So we're just trying to keep in mind all those different sort of contexts that we're designing with and helping to use the street to unify the entire town center, but also make, you know, nice little gestures into the way that private site development on a location by location basis can be a piece of that. Quickly here, as I mentioned, just pointing out, you know, locations for potential stormwater facilities and potential transit stops. So those are just two of the sort of technical things that we're keeping in mind as we work through this design. And we'll get a lot more specific with this as we start to look at actual locations, you know, where current transit runs that will need to accommodate or even anticipating future transit service on different routes through the town center. Is that a question? Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Sorry. All right. And then zooming in on a couple of components here. You know, these are examples of the benches, the street seats that could permanently or temporarily take over parking spaces, you know, a seasonal or long-term basis. Street trees, opportunities for public art and landmarks throughout the streetscape and/or in some of these plaza areas. You know, gathering spaces that could be larger, either at, you know, bigger intersection zones or where buildings may be set back a bit and there's more room to work with. And then just an example of sort of contrast and color and texture of that motive space, the sidewalk zone. Other examples here, just looking at ways to bring core ten steel and timber into the benches. Powder coated iron tree grates. So I think, you know, I'll say the word droplet and I know the I five team said the same. Bringing those concentric circles into some of the patterns, you know, to be a nice contrast and kind of a soothing calming, you know, functional piece that helps protect trees in your landscape environment. We have natural stone in certain locations as a protective feature. Sometimes it could be a seating feature. And then a couple of different images here, the contrasting concrete pattern that could be used in those plazas in the sidewalk zone and elsewhere throughout the street design. And then finally, a few more bits here on, you know, other plaza features that are using, you know, pockets of trees and landscaping to help define space, you know, fun little painted elements that add a bit of whimsy to the location. Crosswalk treatments like this that can use a stamped concrete or some other kind of texture pattern to help identify crossing locations and promote safety and the traffic calming we mentioned earlier. Street lights, ADA paving, both of which use that sort of brown core ten look. Bike racks that have, you know, a sleek kind of riverine brushed stainless steel look about them. So those are just a couple of slides, kind of piecing together some of the different elements that we're keeping in mind for this river plus technological concept right now. And so, you know, that's the recommendation that we have right now that we feel, you know, myself and Philip and the project team, based on all of that public input gathered so far and preliminary conversations with you and City Council, that this is really the, the direction that has broad public support can be implemented and meet a lot of the technical requirements of the city and provides a lot of flexibility, you know, for the city and its private development partners to actually implement in the future in a coherent way. And so our first question to you is simply, you know, do you support the recommendation to move forward with the river environment focused concept with elements of technological innovation? To that concept as you see it right now.
All right. Anybody want to jump in and say if they support it or not?
I'll drop in since I'm unmuted. I like it, to be honest with you. I'm glad that you guys came up or I shouldn't say just you, but that the feedback from our citizens in incorporating the river environment in with the technological innovation. I think it speaks to us as a city as we move forward, particularly with the technological piece, but also the river environment, which was very strong feedback from our citizens. So I like where you're going with this so far. And so I support what you've done here with the river environment and the technological innovation.
Someone from the tech industry that worked in the tech industry in Wilsonville, I would, I can see why that would appeal to you. Commissioner Heberlin, you're a tech guy here in Wilsonville. What do you think?
Yeah, you know, fundamentally, I like it. I, I think it's still from a concept perspective, very Yeah, you know, fundamentally, I like it. I I think it's still from a concept perspective, very early. For me to really provide feedback in terms of of how that intermingles, I I'd love to see some specifics and some. You know, when when we have the the bike pedestrian bridge and we're seeing, you know, some more concrete examples of what things look like. You know, that's really where I'm starting to be able to to clutch in and see what that vision could look like and whether or not it makes sense how those two. Themes are fused together. Because I can see it being a a potential for for being done well, but I can also see where it could. Maybe clash a little. So I'm I'm curious to see how that really flows together. But overall, I'm I'm not against the idea of of fusing those together.
Great. Commissioner Tzatzinsky.
Yeah, I would agree. I I like the river concept and and I I think I need to kind of be more concrete on how the technological. Kind of goes along with that. I mean, come but coming off the. The plaza that we were just talking about and and having it pardon the pun flow into this river environment. I think it would be really cohesive and 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 a beautiful concept that would kind of tie everything together. And then with the techno- technological going into more of the business downtown area, I think that could be really interesting, but I do need to see a little more of the. More concrete ideas and not just, you know. Just the concepts. Yeah, it's it's it. I agree with Commissioner Heberlin. I think that it it it's a little up in the air right now for me to. Really get a a grip on it, but but I like the idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I am. I am a more recent transplant to Oregon and I work in the tech industry and so. I don't associate to Wilsonville with technology as much as other cities around here, so that because I don't have the history, I think so. So I I prefer maybe a a hi- higher emphasis on river, lower emphasis on technology and I'd almost. Feel like like it like it's a modern river, like it's a modern river community that it's it's more of the modern piece than the technology piece. But overall, I haven't seen anything I dislike, but but the the river is the one that appeals to me more. As a as a citizen and that's what feels more connected to our our arts, our town here. So Commissioner Gallagher, um, you had to step away for a second, but we they were just asking us for feedback on do these, do we support these concepts of the river and the technology? Kind of blending together and those elements both. And I don't know if you had a chance to give it some thought.
No, I I I heard you. I I just had to step to the other room.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good beginning and I agree with the idea of the focus on the river. I think that makes sense. I want to see more.
Yeah, and and Vice Chair Willard, I'd I'd like to just one more thought that I had with this, you know. One of the things that that we have the opportunity with this town center is is the size of it, but that's also a drawback and, you know. How do we? How do we make sure that we have a a good look throughout the entire town center without overburdening with cost? In terms of these specific features, you know, a lot of these concrete treatments and some of the things that I'm seeing when I was looking at that overall and and you look at it from a single block, it's like, okay. Yeah, I can see that. But when you are looking at, you know, an area the size that we have. We we also have the potential for a significant cost to to have all of that customization all throughout the town center region. And so that's something that I'm concerned about from from a citizen's perspective and from a taxpayer's perspective is how do we? How do we support the theme without a significant cost outlay to make it throughout this an area this size?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing in the practical. Because I'm I'm looking at all of the these designs that we've seen so far tonight and I'm excited. I want to fast forward to the future and I want to I want to live there and I want to go eat there. So good, good job.
Quickly point out Commissioner Heberlin that cost is a theme of our next question, so we'll be able to get.
Cue the next topic.
Now you bring up money.
We never want to be the first thing, but.
I didn't know it was going to cost anything. Oh, okay. All right.
Any other comments out there? Okay, well, thank you for that and I appreciate that we're at a point where. You know, the town center very, very well and the ins and outs of it. And we're not yet at the point of applying the street design concept to those specific locations. Or or allowing you in your mind's eye to think about this concept in front of the businesses you might go to frequently. So that is the next step over the next few months. So I appreciate, you know, you putting on your your creative hats and. You know, providing feedback in. At the point we're at in the project right now of 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 trying to get some confirmation on this overall recommendation. But knowing there's a lot of nuts and bolts to it yet to come. All right. So to that next question, we we of course know that costs and overall just implementation feasibility. Is going to be a big, big factor in this. And so to to that point, you know, to li- to limit costs where possible, two part question. Which elements of the streetscape? You know, motive spaces in the sidewalk, gathering areas, landscape, public art, other, you know, something we haven't mentioned yet. And then also what specific street locations? If you think back to that map I showed a few minutes ago, and I'll probably jump back there here in a second. You know, should be prioritized for higher levels of design and investment. If we're going to take this concept and maybe go all out in certain locations, but maybe a more tempered, measured approach to it in other locations. And knowing it's going to be implemented by a complex blend of public and private investment. You know, where do you think is important? To really focus sort of the design work and the spending right now. I can go back to that map if it's helpful here.
I have a question. Would it make sense to? It's almost like we we're looking at, we've looked at two different things tonight. We looked at. The plan for the town center park or is that I I is that the name for it? What are we calling it?
The plaza.
Town Center Plaza.
Yeah.
Now we're looking at street elements and it just seems to me, I mean, that's a, that's a lot that's going to happen here. Shouldn't the plaza, shouldn't that be the beginning of this? Facelift that we're in the process of doing this addition that we're doing and allow moving out around it in terms of changing other street elements. Rather than just choosing a particular site. Does that make any sense? Am I making any sense? I'm tired. But I mean, do you know what I'm saying? In other words, you just asked what street location? It just seems to me, maybe we should start with a center and work our way out in terms of. Starting at the around where the plaza is going to be so that. It's cohesive in terms of the changes that are being made.
So I think I can try to speak to that a little bit. I can remember senior planner and. I believe as was mentioned at some point, if not tonight, but. I I'm kind of working on all these different pieces of town center plan implementation and. You know, one of the things to keep in mind is that the Gateway Plaza is one specific discrete product that is a part of the town center plan. And that, you know, is going to happen kind of on its own in terms of, you know. As it gets built, it'll depend on when money is available for the construction of it and it's a city owned parcel. And so from that perspective, we have a. A little more control on the timing and implementation of how that happens. What's unique about some of these streetscape elements as they get implemented is, you know, some of them might be related to some of the other implementation products we have in the plan. And there's there's somewhat a sense of priority there, but then, you know, other pieces of this might come into play if we were looking at. Development or redevelopment on a particular property. And so from that perspective, we don't always necessarily have a sense of. You know, control over the timing as to when we might need to be referring and utilizing, referring to and utilizing this streetscape plan. And so it's really, I mean, in terms of how we look at. What should be prioritized? It's really relating in many ways to some of those projects that will happen as part of the town center plan. And so. It's possible and quite likely that the plaza could get constructed first. That being said, we want to be well positioned. To be able to address opportunities for some of these other implementation projects in the town center plan. And I don't know if that answered your question or not, but I I do think it's like. It's important that we're looking at these high level concepts together now because they will interplay with one another. But I think what what Ben is looking for some feedback on too is just of these places that we've highlighted, what's really the most important, you know, in terms of. For lack of a better word, getting the biggest level of shine. And I think that's where, you know, even if it doesn't happen for, let's say, five years until after the plaza comes into play. That we've at least prioritized that a little bit in terms of cost considerations.
All right. Oh, Commissioner Tzatzinsky, I'll call on you first. Do you have any feedback for the?
I think for me, what I would want to focus on the most is what's going to be at least. What the most highly trafficked or foot traffic and and that kind of and perhaps where most of the business fronts are going to be is where we should focus the most. I mean, if we're going to make something absolutely stunning and beautiful, it should be on that main pro- main promenade area perhaps. But other than that, I mean. I want everywhere to be beautiful, but and I think it will be, but but I I think having that kind of central focus would really kind of. I don't know, hone everything in for me.
Yeah, where you highlighted was one of the blue stars, the unique location designed at that intersection seems like a logical place to it put some of the investment. And, you know, I'd also encourage that maybe sprinkling. A focal point here or there on the local streets might draw pedestrians into those local streets and off the main strip. If and so something to deliberately place some things that encourage that circulation makes sense to me as well. Commissioner Heberlin.
Yeah, I I I really agree with Commissioner Tzatzinsky's comments around, you know, kind of having that. I'll say main street focus, you know, in terms of those high traffic areas. Without forgetting about those local streets, you know, I I think it's important that we still have that, you know, sprinkled around. But maybe it's just the density of of the the features, you know, are is highest at the main street and and it starts to to you to melt away and disperse as you go. But still having some of those features on those local streets. So there is that connection to the overall area.
Yeah. Commissioner Gallagher.
I I'm still stuck on my thoughts about. Choosing the right places to enhance. I'm not certain.
Okay. Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, I would agree with the previous two commissioners comments or concerning the the main focal point, main area. I think it's important, you know, when we think about the businesses that are going to be located there. And and what businesses that we will draw to that center area. As well as, of course, the people coming to that area. So I think that is a certainly a primary focal area. I also believe it's an area that we should put a little bit more money in from the draw, you know, and in in previous presentations we've seen. And I'm not sure what they're called, but you know, I liked where we had the vegetation on the street and it was separated from the main. Street area. So I think that's an area that we'll want to focus on. But having said that, I think we also need to be cognizant of. How do we draw attention to those side streets? Whatever we may do, and I think that's a challenge for you designers to really look at what we can do or what you can do that will help to draw people. To those areas, but overall, I think the the center area really is from me for me is the the primary area for focal focusing on. And also for spending a little bit more money.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. I just, again, my name is Miranda Bates, planning director with the city. And I just wanted to respond a little bit, particularly to Commissioner Gallagher's kind of. Trying to wrap her head kind of around this question and I would just add a little bit of clarification that. I don't know that at the end of the day, we necessarily need a prioritization of places because. At the end of this, the intent is that the streetscape is built out throughout the town center. And each of these streets will have features within it that come from the streetscape plan. So this plan at the end of it will outline the cross sections in more detail with all of the elements that we want. Whether it's for a local street or the main street. We'll have the direction in this plan that we need to be able to do that. I think that some of the sense of. This question and the team can correct me if I'm wrong. But I get that part of the sense here is that there's probably places where we want to make sure. That 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 we as a planning commission want to spend more time talking about, or we want to be able to review that content. As the plan moves forward to really have a sense of like, we know. For example, on the main street that this is what it's going to look like and maybe we've spent more time talking about it and maybe that is a place as Commissioner Wood said. Maybe it's a place where. We integrate a few additional features that might be kind of costly that we don't have to have everywhere in town center. But that there's an extra element on the main street to show that it is the main street, for example, as opposed to one of the other cross sections or streets. So. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that. It's not that some streets will make it in and some won't. We will have the direction at the end of the day so that as this network of streets gets built out over time. All of it will get built consistent with the streetscape plan and it will create a cohesive. Public realm and environment across all of those streets. I think we just want to get a sense of, are there places you want to talk about more? Or that you would if money was tight prioritize more. So I hope I captured that well. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, I think that's a great clarification, Miranda. Thank you. And to dive into that a little bit more. We know that we're dealing with certain streets that exist today. Or are proposed as sort of signature streets in the future. And in the town center plan, a few of those were identified as framework projects to prioritize. Well, maybe I should stop using the word prioritize, but to think about sort of constructing. To a greater degree of completion and and some of those include, you know, Park Place here into the Town Center Park. And the Park Place Extension, you know, south to Wilsonville Road. Those are. It's almost easier to wrap your head around those as discrete projects that go from start to finish. With a certain degree of completion at the end of it. And potentially a little bit less dependent on parcel by parcel redevelopment. And and so that's, you know, one, one course by which this could be implemented. And then that differs from. Perhaps some of these local streets that are just gray dashed lines right now. And there's no rules that that street will go exactly where it is on this map today, you know, that that will be very dependent on the future development throughout the town center. But we want to at least anticipate, you know, enough flexibility for those local streets to be. Welcoming to people walking and biking, but also anticipating they might be lower traffic. They might have to have driveways and service functions as well. So we're, you know, we're sort of in tune with that reality. And so when we talk about, you know, the density of features as Commissioner Heberlin, I believe you brought up. You know, we we come back to places like Main Street, you know, to really think about. Giving it a little bit more of the soup to nuts treatment. As a signature road or somewhere like these promenades, you know, as really inviting safe spaces that that are for mobility, but also for. Or somewhere like these promenades, you know, as really inviting safe spaces that that are for mobility, but also for gathering and open space. And sort of nature in the city type features. We're kind of looking at those goals for the town center streets overall and thinking about which ones to emphasize in different locations.
All right. Any other feedback? Is this the last of your of this topic or do you have more?
I have one more question and I don't even need to go to the slide for it because it's simply to ask. Do you have any other thoughts on the concept or recommendation, you know, at a general or specific level? That you want to discuss or relay tonight?
Well, we sure did like those big rocks that were benches.
We'll have to buy those in bulk.
I'm sorry.
One of the. I forget which concept it was, but it's a worm. Can you hear me? I had an internet blip there.
You're frozen up, Kim.
Can you hear me now?
I think so.
I can hear you.
Am I unfrozen? Great. I'm sorry about that. My router has been doing this lately where it just has moments every once in a while. So that the the stones were actually, I think, one of the images we had in one of the concepts. So that's funny when I saw them. Come up for the plaza. I had a little chuckle. So, you know, we'll we'll just maybe have to think about, I believe they were public seating and or public art. But we should definitely, that could be a really interesting theme, I think, to carry through in some of those smaller gathering spaces.
That would be a great thing to carry through.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing the next one.
All right. Thank you all for your input and attention tonight. See you next time.
All right. So I think we have a presentation from Mr. Polly on the middle housing. Do we need to take a break or anything, or should we keep rolling? I'm good. Anybody else? Okay, I'm getting the keep rolling gesture. We're keeping rolling.
Great. I can keep the introduction.
I do have to step away early. If I do, I apologize.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallagher. And I am happy to keep this introduction short. Commissioners, I will introduce Daniel Polly, Planning Manager with the City of Wilsonville. As you know, he's the project manager for the Wilsonville Middle Housing Project. We have spent a lot of time over the last couple meetings diving into the weeds on some of our policy choices and the details of design and setbacks. And you probably read the staff report this time and thought, okay, what's next? And I think it hopefully was a bit refreshing that we want to just ask you kind of some high level questions. We want to give you some. Information on what we've gleaned over the last month. In a lot of the outreach that the project team has been doing, what we've been hearing from community members as well as some of our key stakeholders in the development community. And kind of with that information, just take a step back because we have some initial policy direction from you. And just talk a little bit more about what success looks like and how that then would feed into our policy choices that we will be moving forward with over the next couple months. So we will hopefully have a nice discussion this evening and it won't be an hour to an hour and a half long. So I want to thank you guys for your patience on this topic. As you know, it is a challenging one. And one at which we don't have a whole lot of time to take, but we are trying to do. In the thoughtful and inclusive way that Wilsonville likes to lead with. So thank you. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Polly.
Thank you, Miranda. And you notice I'm not in council chamber, so hopefully you can hear me better tonight. If at any time you don't hear me well, just raise your hand. I've experimented with some different audio setups, so this should work well. So this will be a shorter presentation. I want to use the bulk of our time to for discussion tonight. So as Miranda mentioned, really, we want to review some key takeaways from the outreach today. I get your additional feedback on what success looks like and answer any outstanding questions as we've gone through a lot of material. And in recent months on this. So whenever we talk about middle housing, we found it is useful and I'll give you a sample of what we've been. Of how we've been explaining it to the community of what is middle housing. What we've been sharing is it's a range of smaller attached or clustered housing types typically built at a similar scale as single family homes. Often missing from neighborhoods for the last seventy, built in the last seventy years. Specifically in Wilsonville, we've described this.
Hey, Dan, I hate, I really hate to interrupt you, but do you have a PowerPoint for this?
Know what? Thanks. Please interrupt me when I do silly things like that.
I thought I remembered reviewing one and then I thought I saw you maybe flip a slide.
All right, here we go.
Yay, okay.
So we talked about this, so middle housing. So we're on what are specifically the middle housing types? That we're talking about. In regards to this project, there's the duplex. There's the duplex is not a duplex. The second detached home on a lot, in other words, or as we've sometimes called a cluster housing, but for purpose of outreach, we're calling it. A second detached home on a lot. Then there's the triplex, which is three units on a lot, the quadplex, which is four. The townhouse, which are sit on their own lot, but are attached at the property line. And then the cottage cluster, which are detached units surrounding smaller detached units surrounding a common courtyard. Something we've been explaining is that middle housing doesn't exist in Wilsonville. We looked into the 2019 housing report and based on that. About 7.5% of Wilsonville's housing stock as of 2019 would be considered middle housing under. This the state statute and rules. And in almost all these situations where. Where middle housing occurs is adjacent to detached single family homes. We continue to share why we're doing this. You know, it's about housing costs. It's about changing households and with the changing households, change of preferences. Equity and inclusion, making sure our regulations aren't barriers to inclusion in our in our neighborhoods and community. Furthering the the Echo Housing Strategic Plan adopted last year. And lastly, complying with House Bill 2001. We've we've done the audit, which you've all been privileged to hear us talk about and been working on setting and designing standards. We've we're we've been working on this check in with with the community. And we'll now be moving into refine, continue to refine our code and plan amendments before coming back. And going through those with the and reviewing those with the community. So we've been in the midst of outreach and appreciate the PC members that have participated. So so far we've done, we've done three Frog Pond one-on-one developer meetings. These one-on-one meetings were helpful where they were able to. Be more direct about kind of their business strategies and what they're thinking for Frog Pond. We we've had a general community meeting that had some focus on Frog Pond, but also kind of covered the community more broadly. Had it last night, we had a community meeting with the Old Town neighborhood. As there are some unique circumstances there that we want to work with on that with that neighborhood. We've had a, we had a broader developer stakeholder meeting which talked about kind of development community related things for a whole community. Also, we've had a number of individual conversations. Which have, which have helped us understand how different community members and developers are thinking about this issue. So I wanted, based on this and what we've done, I also want to mention we're not done with outreach. So this Saturday, we have our first Spanish language focus group. We will also continue outreach in the coming months, including online surveys and other materials. Before again, having community meetings to review the materials with the community. I will note, once all the outreach is complete, we will provide a final outreach report to the board. So some key takeaways to date, I kind of alluded to this first one earlier. Is that the explanation of what is middle housing has been well received and valuable. As you may expect familiarity with the term, as it's used in the state law and rules is not widespread. You know, that traditional dichotomy of single family and multifamily is the base understanding of many community members. And the concept of something that does not fit in either of those molds. Is is truly missing from the broad community understanding. So it's important to take time and explain exactly what this is and how it might. Fit into a neighborhood and give them examples both locally and from other places. So what this really means for the project is that we'll need to continue to clearly communicate about this. And show examples and help people really visualize what this means, that it's not apartments, it's not necessarily some huge bulky building. But how it actually integrates into neighborhoods. Then Frog Pond, we have talked about this. What we found talking to developers and the community and property owners is many of the decisions of what will be built in Frog Pond. Are well in progress and not likely to change drastically. You know, even things that don't have land use approval, land deals and different things are already. In progressing. So generally. Speaking, the builders working in Frog Pond West are intending to focus on single family product consistent with the master plan. And their typical development portfolios. It may stand reason that, you know, the developers that are working out here acquiring property and doing plans. Are in kind of the market of the single family homes and that's their focus. And based on their feedback, if any limited amount of middle housing was developed in Frog Pond West is likely to be four cell units on individual lots. So as mentioned, we've talked about this before. And there's been a lot of focus on the impact of the changes for Frog Pond West. And so what we've, what we're feeling now is while still needing to address compliance. Whichever option the city chooses is not likely to have a significant impact on the ground during this initial build out. So what that means if the city does as a policy choice, want to see a noticeable increase in housing variety in Frog Pond West. They need to explore additional policy programs or incentives. Let's, this isn't in your staff report, so let's touch on what we learned from Old Town last night. Certainly, there's a number of residents that strongly advocate for advocate for as little change as possible. They really emphasize on all the planning that has been done there. That resulted in the neighborhood plan as well as the Old Town single family design standards. There's feelings that the neighborhood is already affordable and diverse. There have been some owners that have had expressed interest in potential middle housing or doing something different with their property. This primarily came out though during separate conversations rather than actually in the community meeting. In terms of our discussion about a legislative rezone or what to do about the zoning here. The neighborhood, based on the feedback we received, is open to the idea of a legislative rezone. They didn't express major concerns of that approach. However, of course, they want to see what the language actually says before they say, yeah, let's do that. And so what this means for the project is that we're going to continue to explore site in and design standards. That can build on the Old Town single family design standards that exists to encourage a similar look, fill and function of the neighborhood. Also continue to develop new Old Town resident, the new Old Town residential zone and prepare for potential legislative rezone. A recurring theme. That came up in both the Frog Pond Old Town and kind of the broader discussion. Is to have middle housing have the look and feel of a traditional single family home or neighborhood. The project team, and we heard this from residents, but we also wanted to understand how the development communities. Views this, both on the feasibility of the design requirements of multiple units to essentially be incorporated into a single family looking structure. Honestly, developers have different responses depending on their expertise. So from developers with expertise focused primarily on. Single family detached products, they had concern about feasibility and desirability and both. Being able to construction methods that need to be used as well as markability of something that you're essentially selling a unit that looks like it's a part of someone else's house. However, developers with more expertise with a variety of housing products did not share the same concerns and recognize the demand for it and shortage and supply of. More diverse housing options and that, you know, there's people making lifestyle choices and people in. A price point that would buy essentially whatever is built. What this means for the project is it appears feasible, though not necessarily preferred by some developers to have design standards requiring. A unified, single family type architectural form. That can be, that could be implemented as as if there's a desired outcome. That that we're aiming for in certain areas of the city. The final key takeaway I I mentioned is that. As we post questions about, you know, what does success look like for middle housing? Answers primarily involved things like integration of different housing types into the fabric of the neighborhood, the presence of natural elements and connectivity. Really, what this meant for the project is it reaffirmed the project's focus on the look, fill and function of neighborhoods. Through citing and designing standards being applied to all these variety of housing types. So at this time, we're going to hold our discussion and feedback on these key takeaways. I've encouraged the commission though to take a couple minutes and write down or otherwise note. Thoughts they have in response to the key takeaways and what guidance it provides to the project. We will then come back to these in a few minutes. What will happen, we'll we'll take a couple minutes, just gonna make notes to yourself, then I'll pose a question to get your response. And then we'll come back to to this topic.
Sounds good.
You can kind of give me a verbal ready to go when 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 commissioners are ready.
Think I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, we've got thumbs up all the way around.
Thumbs up all the way around. Great, thank you. So next, I want to share this prompt you use in the community meeting and invite your response. So I, let's go. So the prompt is imagine you leave Wilsonville and return in 20 years. The city's middle housing code has been successful and middle housing really exists throughout the different neighborhoods. As you walk in Frog Pond or other neighborhoods. You really like what you see. What do you see is really the question. And as you. And as you, I encourage the commission to also consider the desired outcomes that council. Has put forth, which you can find in your staff report, but I'll highlight. A few of those. So it includes support the vision of a thoughtful, inclusive built environment. Increase the opportunity for the development of more middle housing to help the housing needs of our diverse community. And also have. Standards that are usable by the development community. So we can pause to give you a minute to think about this and then happy, I I'd suggest if it's okay. I'm sure to just do a round table and get folks' response to this, to this prompt.
Okay, anybody want to volunteer to go first? I can call on you if not. Commissioner Woods, tag your it.
Oh, boy.
You're on mute, Commissioner Woods. Commissioner Woods. Can you guys hear me?
Sorry about that. I was trying to get out of mute. I had it in mute. I apologize. To answer this question here, what I would see or expect to see. Is a variety of housing that meets the needs of our diverse community. Middle, middle housing specifically duplexes. Neighborhoods with probably some triflexes. But the key to me is what I would expect to see is housing that meets the needs. Of our community and changing community. And in addition to that, I think as I walked or drove around the city. That let's take, take for instance in a whole town that I would see homes. That are newer or new and modern, but they fit the old time, the old town. Community neighborhood, it blends in very well, but it also is meeting once again. The middle housing need and also the need for the diverse communities. Being able to afford that housing. And and one of the, one last thing I'll say is I'd be definitely one of the first places I'd be going over to. Is Frog Pond East and South. To see how tho- those areas have been built out and particularly with the middle housing.
Anybody else want to volunteer to go next?
Can I have what he's having?
Yes, you may.
Well, I, I think I'm going to kind of second Commissioner Woods on what he said. I think. I think what I'd like to see if I was still alive and I won't be in 20 years is. Just a continuity. I think the only, only concerns that I have architecturally is. I've watched neighborhoods that have become a mishmash of things and it doesn't mean that any of them are wrong, but it it just, they don't go together. And I agree, for instance, that if you go to Old Town that you would, you would, the homes would would be reflective of a feeling. That we don't want to lose. So I don't think I really would be. Expecting to see all the same kinds of things, but I think that there have to be design elements. For instance, when I lived in Santa Fe, I lived in a community called El Dorado. And throughout Santa Fe. You can choose from a, from a myriad of colors that you can paint your homes. But there is, there are architectural features that are required that you cannot exceed in terms of height, in terms of certain design elements. And what it's done for that community is it's very beautiful. So there's a lot of different kinds of homes, but. You don't have, you know, a three story home over here and a little cottage over here. You have, there's a continuity of design. And I would hope to see that in the areas that we go to.
Thank you. Commissioner Tzatzinsky?
Yeah, I would like to echo what both of the previous commissioners said. I would like to see that. No matter where you are in the city, you are. You feel included and just because, well, not just because, but if you live in a community where there's. Triplexes and single family homes, they all fit together and you don't feel like, well, if you live in the single family home, you're in the much nicer part of town. Or if you live in. A tripla or whatever, it's, it, everything works together and everybody feels like they belong. I would also like to see that everyone in any part of town has access to a nice park or a nice natural element that. We're getting trees and greenery in those, in those parts of town as well.
Good feedback. All right, following my mute rule, you're last.
Okay. Fundamentally, I agree with all three commissioners who went before me. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna be a little bit of a downer. My concern is in 20 years. Our middle housing code will not be successful. And and it's precisely because of Mr. Polly, what you were saying in terms of of what the Frog Pond West developers are already doing. The decisions have already been cast for Frog Pond West and. I don't see there being a public will to change that. And and so we are now relying on Frog Pond East and South to. To take up that slack, but Frog Pond East and South were already designed for more. Dense housing, more affordable housing. It may not always all be middle housing. So that, that is my concern and and the thing that I would, I would want to make sure that council. Understands is that. It sounds like we aren't going to get something that we want in middle housing in Frog Pond West unless we do something differently.
Yeah, I wrote that down when, when Mr. Polly asked us to write down our thoughts. That was my thought too, is we're not going to get there unless we start incentivizing. It's not going to organically, the market isn't going to drive this. So that I share that, that concern.
If I may, Commissioner Hubeline, and we are going to get to that discussion of what we heard. And kind of what that means and you all can have this conversation about. From a policy standpoint, what does the commission think about that? And do you have feedback for staff in terms of grappling with that? Or directing us to look at certain things in terms of. If you want to pursue more, right? So that is still a policy question on the table for us to discuss. But I would ask because you. The, I, I'm going to push you because this question is if we've succeeded, what do you see? The thought is we aren't succeeding because we think we've done something or haven't done something. Then I guess I would ask is. So if we were to do, make certain policy choices to make it successful, then what is it that you're seeing?
Yeah, and and I would say my vision of success mirrors what Commissioner Woods and Gallagher and Tzatzinsky have said. Those aspects are all important to me and those, a harmonious neighborhood. That all goes together and has the features that everybody wants is is my vision of success. And and not to have it just be distributed in pockets of very expensive, nice looking areas and then intermixed with.
So you might be just stretching it to add that you'd also see it in Frog Pond West if we've truly succeeded.
Yes, if, if we, if we're really serious, and that's what I've been saying all along throughout this, if the city is really serious about it. Then we have to be willing to make that difficult change and change the direction that we are going with Frog Pond West. I'm not personally sure if the city. Is willing and able to do that. And if that's the case, okay, I'm, I'm not sure that we. Truly meet the goal of that good old housing at that point.
And I appreciate you clarifying for me.
No problem.
And if I may, I raised that question, I think the very first meeting I was on, which is from a, as a real estate broker. You mentioned that the developers right now, they're, they're, they're in place. They, they've made their plans and they're forging ahead. As they are developing, as they have agreed and they're contracted to to develop. It's very difficult to change a neighborhood. 20 years, you're looking at probably one turn. Maybe two, depending on the marketplace of people owning a home, selling a home, moving some, some opportunity there. But it is difficult to come into a single. Family development and suddenly start creating density. In terms of people who move into an area because they think it's going to be this way and this is what attracted them and then all of a sudden things start to change. So it's, it's, it's a very challenging thing to do and. I agree that is, is there, is there the ability to do it legally? Can you, I mean, how do you handle that? What do you do with your developers and say, well, you're going to have to do it this way moving forward? That, that's a very, I don't know the answer to it legally. But. That's the challenge. And so I think that in 20 years, there is an opportunity for a turn, at least one turn of a neighborhood.
Okay, my final feedback is what success looks like for me is I, I tend to find myself really enjoying going on my long walks with my husband and my dogs. Through Villable. I think it's fascinating. I like seeing all the different varieties of housing. We love. Intentionally taking all that in. And so the, the one thing that I would do that would be better than that. Is in the areas that there, there are distinct areas where there's more townhouse and connected homes. And then there's areas where they're separate. And so I think having more duplexes and and subtle triflexes. That are in those single family home, larger, single family home areas. So that way the middle housing isn't so polarizing. Throughout the neighborhood that it's actually intersprinkled throughout the entire neighborhood. So it's both. Because I do think the variety is attractive.
Really appreciate your thoughtful input on that question. Let's go ahead and then let's go back then on. You taking your notes from the additional, from the initial community feedback. What additional guidance would you have for the project team based on this initial community feedback? Or other comments on the key takeaways from the community feedback?
Does the community feedback include the developer feedback or is that separate?
Yeah, it's all the feedback we've gotten from developers or the community.
I think we're going to have to incentivize. That's what I feel. Even in Frog Pond East and South, we may have to incentivize to get to the numbers that we seek. Others?
Yeah, okay, I'll do it. You know, from, from my perspective, I know, thanks, Miranda. You know. The question of, of what is success and and to me. I would love if we had a discrete criteria of what success meant for middle housing. What does that mean in terms of the number of units generated? Because to me, until we are able to define a measure of success, it's difficult to define a plan to execute and to be successful. Because if our measure of success is that we add five middle housing units in all of Frog Pond. Okay, we can meet that. But if it's to add 200. That's going to take a significant lift and a significant financial lift from the city to make that happen. So. I really would love to see a discrete goal. And I know it's hard for, for council to do that, but I think that that is what I believe we need to really be able to come up with a plan.
I would agree with that. I, I, my, I wrote down my question was we're at 7.5% middle housing. What's our target? Because we, I don't know, is it as much as possible? But what is, what is, what are the numbers look like for that?
I think that's a really smart place to start.
Yeah, I mean, in, in, in any planning that you do in the city, I would think as well. You, 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 you have some objectives. I mean, what Commissioner Hubeline stated is exactly correct. You, you really need to look at, okay, what is the objective that we want to see in our middle housing? Is that a measure of success? So I, from my perspective, I'd like to see that, whether it's, you know. It's got around it, some caveats or what have you, but it's still. I think that the city should be looking at that. What is the objective that we'd like to see that we feel we will be successful?
I'd also like to bring one more thing up. I raised a week, a, a, a month ago or two months ago. Not only would I like to know how many, exactly how many, what are the numbers? How much, how many do we need? To meet the criteria that's required. But also. We're talking about different lifestyles. People who want to be in a larger home or in a single home. Have a different lifestyle than maybe someone who wants to live in a townhouse. So we have to also look at not only where it's located, but what, what services are around it that feed that lifestyle. And I haven't heard that discussion and I, I just, I just feel that it's pertinent to where the development happens. Because it's not just about square feet of a home, it's about a neighborhood and the amenities around it and the, the. I'm sorry, I am tired. How close shopping is and can you walk to it rather than having to drive? If you have a family and you have children and you have animals and you're going to live a different lifestyle than perhaps a single or a couple. Who want to be in a townhouse and want a very different lifestyle. And so where it is in the city is going to determine whether or not that is a lifestyle that they can have in Wilsonville. And maybe that's not in Frog Pond, maybe that is in a different part like in Old Town. So I, I just think I haven't heard enough discussion around that to satisfy those questions for myself.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Polly, did you get what you were looking for on this question?
Yeah, I'll just ask one more. What other outstanding questions do you have from all this previous material we've worked through? I think we've touched on some of those and the answer to your previous questions, but just wanted to give the opportunity if there's any other outstanding questions. From the previous work sessions or materials that you feel hasn't been asked clearly or we need. You want us to make sure we're keeping on the radar as we work through this.
Sounds like the resounding one is around the metrics and what are, what are the stated goals? Are there any others? All right.
All right. Well, thank you and we'll be back next month for more discussion. And so we'll, we'll continue to work. This continuing outreach will be back. With you next couple, well, next few months. Then we'll next brief the city council next in April. And working towards adoption in the fall. So thank you again for your time and your thoughtfulness. After a long planning commission meeting.
Great, yes. All right, we are, we started late and it's getting late. So. I think the next item on the agenda is just anything that we, anybody have any questions over the city council or the work plan that's before us? The calendar that's before us? All right.
Hopefully one easy one for, for Miss Batesville. So. Yeah, we'll see how this one goes. With, with Fry's closing, has there been any discussion around the town center redevelopment options? That that may or may not open up?
I have received zero phone calls. No, I'm just kidding. I'm actually happy to report that we've been extremely busy responding to multiple phone calls about the property. About the town center plan, about the town center zone and what that means for the potential reuse and or redevelopment of that site. We've received questions on a wide variety. We've received questions on a wide variety of things related to that. And we know that folks are talking with the property owner.
Good question.
I know, I'm very happy that I can actually report. Reports that I have.
It was a question I'm sure most of us have, you know, have. And wondering, I know I, I was wondering the same thing. So, thank you.
All right, then I think our business here is done. Shall we move for a motion to adjourn?
I moved with during the meeting.
I'll second.
All right, I don't think I have to take a vote on this, correct?
No.
All right.
You do not, and Commissioner Willard, great job tonight.
Excellent.
Well, then I close this planning commission meeting closed at eight forty-five PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for another excellent evening.
Bye bye.
Here, stay well.